I did get it. I mean, like a ball. Like kind of a meat. The Zaro.
Code of many colors, yeah.
Yeah, Siri Andrew and Tierra Murnall. I got Seth. I did not get the bird in.
Oh, um. Online, you're gonna have Kim Tappett?
Yep.
I know she's speaking for the budget.
Yep. All right, if everyone take their seat, please. We'll get started shortly.
Right.
Oh, very prompt. Okay. Are we good? Sure. Good? All right, great. Hello, everyone. I am Brad Sherber, the Chair of Manhattan Community Board Five. We will begin tonight, our November Board meeting, with the public hearing, and so I will turn it over to our first Vice Chair, Yaron Noddy Victor.
Hi, good evening. This is the public hearing of Manhattan Community Board Five. I'm Yaron Noddy Victor, and I'll be your Chair for the public hearing. During this public hearing, members of the public are invited to speak for two minutes on subjects set forth in the agenda or any topic that relates to the affairs of the community district. Excuse me. If you would like to address the board before it votes on any matters tonight, now is your opportunity to do so. Although there will be a public session during the full board meeting later, that public session will be at the end of the meeting after all the votes have taken place. So if you want to address the board on any matters before it votes tonight, now is your time to do so. If you'd like to speak during the public hearing and you are in person, please fill out a speaker form. If you are joining us online, please use the raise hand feature now if you want to speak. When you are recognized, you will be able to unmute yourself. And please, I've been asked to remind people, please speak up when you're speaking to help those in the room hear you. And I'm actually going to do things a little differently tonight. Tonight, we're going to start with folks, whether in the room or online, who are speaking specifically on the budget or the district need statement. So if you are speaking specifically on the budget or the district need statement, whether in the room or online, please raise your hand. I know, I see. I just want to see if anyone's in the room. Anyone in the room? Okay, so we're going to go online to Kim Tabit.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Kim Tabit, speaking on behalf of the Flatiron 20th and 21st Street Block Association. And I just wanted to reiterate tonight a request that I had passed on via email. And that CB five once again include a budget allocation for a dedicated police force. Increased patrolling for 20th and 21st Streets on the weekends. I know many of you have heard me speak in the past about the quality of life issues that we face on our two blocks, which stem from the unusually high concentration of nightclubs in the area. And last year, CB five recognized the need for increased police allocation and included the request in the budget, although it was unfortunately never implemented due to citywide staffing shortages. But the conditions haven't changed, so we are hoping to have it in the budget again. We'd like to continue the quest. A few weeks ago, Sergeant Frank Faber from the 13th Precinct's nighttime quality of life team attended our block association meeting, and he confirmed two critical points. His team is significantly understaffed, and the 13th precinct receives a disproportionately high volume of 311 and 911 calls compared to other precincts. I don't remember exactly the statistics, so I won't try to cite them, but the disparity that he described was substantial and reinforces the need. We spoke to Lieutenant Rice at the precinct, who confirmed that the necessary staffing level needed to manage weekend activity effectively on 20th and 21st Streets is one supervisor and eight officers on Fridays and Saturdays. And this figure request reflects what was historically, what worked in the past. So once again, we would like to request that you allocate a budget for one supervisor and eight officers on Fridays and Saturdays. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else to speak on the budget or the district needs statement? Okay, so we're going to come back to the room, and I'm going to ask Lisa Wager to come up to the podium here, and that mic should be on. If it's not, I'll help you.
There's just quiet, so.
I'm kind of loud.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Lisa Wager, Director of Government Community Relations at the Fashion Institute of.
Try again.
Hello? Oh, that's much better, right? Is that too loud? There's like, there's feedback now.
Try it.
Okay, okay, good enough. I'll stand back here. Hello, I'm Lisa Wager, Director of Government Community Relations for the Fashion Institute of Technology, the SUNY College on West 27th, between 7th and 8th in the district. It is a time of big changes in New York City, and in that spirit, we had two big announcements on campus this month. Two weeks ago, we held the ribbon cutting on 28th Street for the new Joyce F. Brown Academic Building, our first new academic building in nearly 50 years. Designed by shop architects, the 10-story building features a striking glass facade with a rotating exhibition of student work in the first floor vitrines and views down into its two-story knitting lab, the largest campus knitting lab in the U.S. There are 26 energy-efficient classrooms and studios, administrative offices, and FIT's first dedicated student center space. The projected LEED gold certification reflects FIT's commitment to environmental stewardship. The project was funded by New York State and New York City and a distinguished roster of individual and corporate sponsors. In a shared commitment to strengthening public higher ed and supporting the next generation of talent for the fashion and creative industries, we and the students are very grateful. Now, you remember, may remember that President Brown announced last year that that would be her final year, and she was stepping down after 27 years. Last week, the FIT Board of Trustees announced the new president will be Jason S. Schuback. Mr. Schuback currently serves as the Dean of Drexel University's Westfall College of Media, Arts, and Design. President Schuback will step into the role on January 15th. The museum at FIT's 34th Symposium Fashion and Psychoanalysis will be held tomorrow from 10 to 4:00. The symposium relates to the exhibition Dress, Dreams, and Desire: Fashion and Psychoanalysis. Certainly, fashion designers speak the language of psychoanalysis, and like analysts, designers often focus on sexuality and the unconscious. Speakers include fashion designer Bella Freud, yes, that Freud, fashion scholar Simona Segre, Emmy-nominated actress Laverne Cox, who is an alum, internationally lauded MFIT Director Valerie Steele, and prominent psychoanalysts. There's more information on the website, Fashion and Psychoanalysis Symposium. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to stay in the room and go to Mike Hayback.
Two minutes?
Two minutes.
Please note the way I'm speaking. If everybody who speaks tonight speaks in the same cadence and amplitude that I'm speaking, I would really appreciate it because I don't hear so good. Anyway, that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about here is my walk. You know, I walk a lot around the city. And tonight's a little walk from Sixth Avenue to this entrance on this side of this street, on the south side of 39th Street. I noticed a couple of things that really got in my craw, not to be an injustice collector, which I try not to be, but I noticed it was kind of rush hour-y, a little after, a little before 6:00. And a lot of people were on the street, and the amount of space that was on the street was ridiculous. It was, I measured it, was 12 feet from a building line to the end of the sidewalk. And in that 12 feet, one of the locations had a tree planter on the curb, on the curb side. And on the building side, there was an extension to a restaurant sticking out so that the space to walk between the tree planter and the obstruction here was about three feet tops. You had to walk sideways, and I had a backpack on, so I had to go single-handedly. I think that the way to complain about this, and I hate, again, to be a complainer, is to call 311. I was once told that that's what you do. I'm going to do that when I get home tonight. And I would implore anybody else who encounters the same kind of sidewalk obstructions that I do to maybe make a case for 39th Street between 5th and 6th Avenue on the south side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Christopher Nizaro.
Good evening. Mike, is that good? I'm just going to check with you. Loud enough? Louder? Okay, sorry. Good evening. My name is Christopher Nizaro. I'm here in multiple capacities tonight, but one of the capacities is as a teacher of a city council-funded class at LaGuardia Community College. Many of my students are here. Hey, Boba Car. As, hi, as a class trip, because I'm supposed to be teaching them, so I'm teaching you tonight. And everything I have to say from now on is unrelated to that, that particular thing, so let's reset. So again, my name is Christopher Nizaro. I'm a part-time faculty member at the New School and a member of ACTUAW Local 7902. I want to call attention to restructuring process at the New School that is cutting the jobs of academic workers. That would be the teachers, graduate student workers, and staff who are the university, while largely preserving high-paid administrative positions and executive compensation. Recent alarming actions include a hiatus on accepting new PhD students for next year, cutting popular classes, and proposing an austere reshuffling of the colleges within the university. These cuts are being formulated as necessary, but they follow years of top-heavy spending and poor financial management. This is not a correction. It is a transfer of resources away from those who educate students and towards administrative, an administrative model that treats education like a business. This has serious public consequences. The New School is a major presence in Manhattan's CB five and CB two districts. Its decisions affect thousands of academic workers, students, and neighborhood residents, and by extension, the city's cultural and educational life. I ask our elected officials, city council members, state assembly members, and state senators to take notice and stand with academic workers. The public has a stake in what happens here. When universities erode stable academic employment, the quality and accessibility of education decline for everyone. The New School is founded on free thought. It's a place where ideas flourished and where almost anyone could be taught anything. My class is entitled "Post-Human Nuclear Experience." I urge the community boards and our elected representatives to press the New School's leadership for transparency, accountability, and a real commitment to fair labor practices that reflect the values of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Todd Shapiro.
Hello, everybody. I'm here tonight. We have our CB five elections. I'm speaking in support of Catherine Ellington for second Vice Chair in tonight's election. I strongly believe that Catherine is the right person at the right time for this leadership post, and she has the right combination of experience and skill to support our leadership team and step in as necessary to run our board affairs should the need arise. I've served with Catherine on the Slap and Parks and Public Places Committee, as well as the Cannabis Task Force and on the Executive Committee, where she served as Assistant Secretary, and she has distinguished herself in her service. She has the right temperament and philosophy for these contentious times. Independent-minded, she values the democratic and collaborative process. And in my time working with her on so many public sessions, she has always taken care that our neighbors are consulted and listened to on the issues that face. she has always taken care that our neighbors are consulted and listened to on the issues that face our community. And her temperament is first-rate, friendly, open-minded, and expansive in considering all sides of an issue, putting those that she deals with at ease. Catherine is ready for a leading position on our board, and I have no doubt that she will follow in the tradition of the many fine women that have served on our leadership team. When I served my term as first vice chair and we updated our bylaws and approach to selecting our leadership to bring in new faces that would gain experience, work hard, and in due course rise to become our officers, my fondest wish was that an individual such as Catherine would rise to the occasion and serve, and she has. I urge you to support her and her efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so now we'll go online. Um, so if there's anyone in line who'd like to speak, please raise your hand now. Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to give it back to Brad.
All right, I will now call to order the full board meeting of Manhattan Community Board Five. I am Brad Sherburne, the Chair. We'll start our full board meeting tonight by hearing from the elected officials that are in attendance and wish to address the board. The elected officials will be followed by any representatives or other, of other electeds who may report to the board for two minutes each. The board then enters into its business session, which tonight consists of approval of the minutes, officer elections, district manager's report, chairs report, committees' reports, and resolutions with a question and comment period, which we will then follow with new business. Lastly, we will then conduct a public session for those who would like to address the board on any item that was not covered during the meeting and that they did not speak to the board about during the public hearing, followed by adjournment. So I will start this evening tonight by calling elected officials. I don't believe we have any electeds in person. Great. So we'll now move to elected representatives, starting with Julie Rowland from, for Assembly Member Boris.
How's that? Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Julie. Once again, I'm the new district director for Alex Boris, so that's announcement number one. As if you missed me last month, I'm brand new. I want to meet all of you. Please come talk to me. Please be nice to me. Um, the next biggest thing is that on Sunday, this Sunday, from eleven till one at Hunter College, we're having a town hall. Uh, the link to RSVP is bit.ly slash boris town hall twenty twenty-five. Please RSVP there. Uh, we can send that out as well. You can find it all over Instagram. Come find me if you need the link, but please come, even if you don't find the link, please find Hunter College, Sunday, eleven. Um, also, an update, a legislative update, click to cancel is now in effect. Uh, this is a bill that passed unanimously led by Assembly Member Boris that subscription services should be just as easy to cancel as they are to sign up for. So, thank God. Okay. Um, and then also, just with me being new, I want to make sure you have my email. Last time I gave it, julie@alexboris.nyc. But now I also have an official Assembly one, so that's rowlandj@nyassembly.gov. So for anyone who's making an announcement where they're asking for elected officials to help, uh, write my email down, send us an email, and please get us involved directly. And then lastly, we have notary services available Mondays through Thursdays from ten till two for free. Please come use them. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think we will go online now, starting with Lori H.
Good evening. Um, Michael, can you hear me? Because I tried to be as loud as possible. Good evening, Brad and CB five. Just a couple of items. Um, our office was very pleased that last month the city council passed, uh, Councilmember Botcher's legislation, Intro ten sixteen, that requires gun stores to display graphic warning images, uh, that illustrate the real dangers of keeping a firearm in the home. It's the first of its kind in the nation. Uh, it's modeled after the effect of graphic cigarette warnings labels. Um, this loan ensures those risks are clear and undeniable at the point of sale. Uh, ten sixteen mandates that all gun stores in New York City display the images that convey the deadly risks associated with firearm ownership, including accidental shootings, suicides, and domestic violence, um, yesterday. And I don't want to steal Franklin's talking points, in case he talks about this as well. The council member, along with Councilmember Powers, introduced fourteen seventy. This bill clarifies that housing programs giving, uh, preference to artists does not violate the city's human rights law. Uh, prohibits discrimination based on occupation. This change will finally allow the Department of Housing Preservation Development and Nonprofit developers to move forward with building affordable housing specifically for artists, something other cities have, uh, done successfully, like Chicago, which has programs like the Pullman Art Space Loss, which offers affordable housing, uh, and Los Angeles, Home to Hollywood Arts Collective Apartments. Um, that's a complex that was developed in partnership with the Entertainment Community Fund to provide affordable housing. And finally, on Monday, November twenty-fourth, our office is hosting another of our policy perspectives, this time with Andy Byford. It will be a virtual event at five P.M. Uh, once we have the flyer, we'll send that to Marissa. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, uh, next up is Franklin Richards.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I hope you can all hear me there. Um, I, I won't repeat everything that Lori said. She did a phenomenal job. Uh, so yes, uh, Councilmember Botcher and Councilmember Powers introduced the artist housing legislation yesterday, and she explained it perfectly well. So in the interest of time, we're going to move on. We're also, um, proud to see that the legislation for, uh, the gun labeling was also passed, the first in the nation legislation to require firearms. Stores in New York City to display warnings, so Councilmember Powers is very proud of that as well. Um, and, uh, just some upcoming events that we have for our office. On Monday, November seventeen, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M., our office is partnering with the New York City Health and Hospitals to provide vaccinations for flu and COVID nineteen for those over the age of eighteen. Vaccinations are offered on a walk-in basis. There is no need for appointment, but we would really appreciate if folks made a reservation by emailing, uh, k powers at council.nyc.gov or giving our office a call at two one two eight one eight zero five eight zero. If you're unable to make the event on the seventeenth, you can call eight seven seven six nine two four six nine two or, or visit New York City Health and Hospital for a list of walking sites and hours. Um, you didn't, please be sure to bring your ID and insurance information. Vaccines are provided at no out-of-pocket cost to you, rather to your insurance. Um, if you are uninsured, they will provide information to see if you qualify for insurance. No one will be turned away due to a lack of insurance. The, the location will be four sixty-two First Avenue. Um, and that's all I have for you tonight. Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Thank you, Franklin. Okay, next up is Nate Brous from Senator Kruger's office.
Hi, everyone. Uh, so my name is Nate. I'm a community liaison for Senator Kruger. Um, I know you're used to seeing Alex. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it. You're stuck with me, but nice to meet all of you guys, uh, for the first time virtually. Um, I just have a quick, a couple of quick updates. Um, the first one is a legislative update that I'm super excited to share. Uh, Senator Kruger just introduced some, um, legislation. It is S eighty-five eighteen. Um, and it's to regulate crypto mining in New York State. Um, so this would impose a tax on cryptocurrency mining facilities. Because as many of you know, they consume a massive amount of water and electricity that drives up the, um, electricity rates of everyone in their, their area, as well as, you know, uses water um, at a ridiculous rate. And, uh, this tax would then be used to support energy efficiency and affordability programs for families in New York. So it's a bill we're super proud of and really have high hopes for. Another thing I wanted to share quickly is, uh, Senator Kruger, uh, recently released some written testimony, uh, to present to the New York Public Service Commission, which is the group responsible for approving utility rate increases. Um, so when your Con Ed bill goes up, it is through the PSC. At, at some point, they have to approve that. Um, and, uh, Senator Kruger expressed her strong opposition to these rate increases, um, that the Con Ed requested in, in this rate cycle. Um, made it clear that the current pricing model is a serious burden on New Yorkers, and it's an issue we're, we're taking very seriously as an office. And, you know, we're going to push a bunch of legislation this year, something we, we really are super focused on, just because we hear from so many of you about how, how awful it is, and as New Yorkers, we all know that. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to try to put that, uh, testimony in the chat. I, I might have jumped the gun a little bit and tested it, but I'm going to try to see if that works. Um, the other thing quickly is we just came out with our updated resource, uh, Senior and Older Adult Resource Guide. Uh, it's one of our most popular publications as an office. Um, if you want to request one of those, you can call our office anytime, uh, during the week at two one two four nine zero nine five three five, and it's also available on our website. Um, and I really recommend you do that if you're looking for resources. So thank you. That's all I got. Have a good night.
Well, I'll, Nate will put it in the chat. Well, we'll read it to you. We'll get it for you, Mike. Thank you. Okay, uh, next up is Mackey Bentley from Representative Nadler's office.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as you all know, last night, the House voted on the Republican funding bill to reopen the government. Uh, this funding bill failed to address the Republican health crisis and stop Donald Trump from illegally impounding congressionally-approved funds. Uh, New Yorkers deserve better, and that is why Congressman Adler proudly voted no on the GOP funding bill. Uh, Donald Trump and House Republicans abandoned their promise to lower costs for working families. Um, from the first day of the shutdown, they refused to negotiate in good faith and instead spent seven, uh, weeks of taxpayer-funded vacation while Americans face a deepened Republican healthcare crisis. Um, as these challenges we face under the administration continue to grow, uh, Congressman Adler remains committed to lowering healthcare costs and protecting the well-being of American families. And to stay informed as these events unfold, please follow the Congressman on Twitter, Facebook, Blue Sky for latest updates. And other quick updates, real quick, Congressman Adler and Representative Garcia laid a letter with twenty-two of their colleagues demanding answers from Delta Airlines CEO after the company indicated it is partnering with a company to expand its use of generative AI and move towards individualized surveillance-based pricing. And finally, Congressman Adler, along with thirty-eight members of Congress, urged nineteen Democratic governors to block ICE from accessing driver's license and registration information of people living in their states in response to Trump's politicizing of weapons, uh, weaponizing of the agency. Uh, that's all I have. Uh, thank you so much, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Callie C. from Senator Gonzalez's office.
Hi there. Yeah, my name is Callie, and I am here as a representative from the Office of State Senator Kristen Gonzalez. I just have a couple of updates to share. Um, first, this past Friday afternoon, November seventh, our office held a joint mobile office hours with Representative Nadler's office at Strauss Houses. We were glad to work with this federal office to be able to offer resources, information, and casework assistance for our constituents. Next, our office is excited to share a recent win with the renaming of Twenty-third Street Subway Station to Baruch College Station. Last year, our office worked with Assembly Member Epstein to push a bill through legislation, and the purpose of the renaming proposal is to recognize the institution of Baruch College and its students. The station has now effectively been renamed to honor Baruch College's impact on its community. And an upcoming event, uh, to flag for everybody is our State of the District Town Hall meeting. This will be taking place next Monday, November seventeenth at six P.M. We will be hosting the meeting in person at the SUNY School of Law in LIC. There will also be an option to attend virtually. Senator Gonzalez and her team will be discussing the current state of District Fifty-nine, celebrating our community partners, and discussing the work our office is doing to make District Fifty-nine a safer and more affordable place to live. She will also discuss our office's work in Albany, where we're fighting to protect our immigrant neighbors, improve data privacy, increase AI labor protections, promote green jobs, green space, and climate justice, and more. For anyone interested in attending, I will drop the registration link in the chat. And as always, our office is here to help. Please feel free to reach out with any questions, comments, et cetera. Our office number is seven one eight seven six five six six seven four, or you can email gonzalez@nysenate.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Jasper Diaz from the Mayor's Office.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Uh, I want to thank District Manager, uh, Marissa Mack and Chair Brad Sherburne for having me today. I very much wanted to attend in person, but I've been inundated with, uh, constituent service requests and have not been able to leave my office. Um, I am the new Manhattan Borough Director for Manhattan South. That's community boards one through six, everything below, uh, Fifty-Ninth Street. Uh, my predecessor, Robin Forrest, moved on to First Deputy Mayor Randy Mashaw's office. Um, if you need any agency-related assistance, uh, you can call me directly. Uh, my cell phone number is three four seven six six nine six six five nine. You can also send me email at jadias@cityhall.nyc.gov. Um, I have a couple of quick updates, uh, this morning. Uh, the mayor, uh, ACS Commissioner Dan Hauser, as well as our deputy mayor, um, for um, Health and Human Services, Miles Gustav, um, announced an expansion of the Fair Futures Programs to connect youth and foster care to college for free, offer coaches and, uh, career counseling. Um, the city has doubled the number of youth in foster care that are enrolled in college for free since twenty twenty-two. Over four thousand youth, uh, have, who have been in foster care, the juvenile justice system now have dedicated coaches. We're planning to expand this by fifty percent. Um, it's a total, uh, a investment of a hundred and sixty-three million dollars to reach eight thousand total participants across five ACS programs aimed at supporting youth. Um, delivers on another commitment of the Mayor's twenty twenty-five State of the City Address. A couple of other quick updates. Um, the mayor kicked off, uh, Veterans Day by announcing the official launch of the expanded municipal employee housing preference, which now includes military veterans as well. Um, and on HPD's Housing Connect website, there will also include a ten percent preference for eligible city employees and military veterans. Um, in addition, um, over the government shutdown that recently ended, um, at the time, the mayor had announced public-private initiatives to support New York City SNAP recipients as, um, uh, federal, as the federal government shutdown threatened to cut off benefits for one point eight million New Yorkers. I believe the governor's office kicked in forty-one million for, um, food pantries as well during this time. Um, in addition, um, the mayor announced additional funding, uh, sometime back for five thousand new NYPD officers. Um, in the November plan, bringing uniform headcount up to forty thousand by fiscal year twenty twenty-nine. Absolutely, and this is an investment of seventeen point eight million dollars. Um, lastly, the mayor announced first-in-the-nation technology to integrate public schools with nine one one for rapid response to active shooter situations. I'm happy to send more updates. Um, the next general board meeting again. Um, if you need any assistance, you can contact me, um, and my contact information, which is also in the chat, and, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then I believe lastly is Brocker Rosenberg from the Borough President's Office.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you all virtually. Mike, Mike, is this okay? Sorry, I should talk a little louder. I've had a headache today, so I'm used to talking softly. Um, but I'll try to speak up. Um, I just have a few things from our office. Uh, I want to thank everybody who participated in the Leadership Training Series. We're happy to provide training, uh, on a variety of items, uh, and especially as we approach board term limits. We held a training on archiving resolutions and board documents, uh, led by Jesus Perez of CB six, uh, to make sure that the institutional knowledge gets transferred from all of you to the next generation of board members. If you missed any of the trainings, even the mandatory ones, don't worry, they are available on our YouTube channel. Uh, you can also find previous trainings we've hosted in past years on housing financing, land use one oh one, uh, and building new leadership, among others. Um, further, um, given the complications surrounding the federal shutdown and SNAP benefits, um, we, we want to encourage, if you or somebody you know is looking for food assistance, please visit the Food Bank of New York's Food Map Finder to find the nearest location for support. I believe that's findfood.org. Uh, and then for federal workers, our office partnered with the Hebrew Free Loan Society to provide no-cost, interest-free loans up to seventy-five hundred dollars for low- and moderate-income federal workers. Um, you can reach out directly to us. I'm actually not sure what the status of that, given, uh, the end of the shutdown, but, um, please reach out if you're interested in learning more or applying. Um, and finally, the Borough President recently provided testimony at an important hearing on right to counsel, uh, which Borough President Levine was proud to introduce and successfully pass into law in his time in the city council, making New York City the first municipality in the nation to provide a lawyer to households facing eviction in housing court. The hearing provided the Borough President a platform to provide recommendations on how to increase the percentage of cases receiving representation. Um, that's all I have tonight, but thank you and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Brocker. All right, and then I see we have one more, uh, Sierra Lugo from Assembly Member Epstein's office.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Apologies for not being able to have my camera on. I'm actually in between classes right now. Um, but I'll start it off with a legislative update. So this month, Governor Hochul signed, um, Assembly Member Epstein's Bill A five six B with Senator Holman Siegel into law. Now, no one in the state of New York can be charged more than twenty dollars or the cost the landlord incurred for a bounced check. These protections already existed for rent-stabilized tenants, but will now extend to market-rate tenants. And we have a couple of upcoming, um, events. Uh, we have a Thanksgiving, our annual Thanksgiving vegan roast giveaway, which will be on Thursday, November twentieth, at our district office, um, at four P.M. We also have our annual Turkey Drive, which is going to be on Monday, November twenty-fourth, at the Lower East Side Center. I can put the link to RSVP in the chat. And we also have, excuse me, on Saturday, November fifteenth, our Hands Off NYC Day of Action Educational Canvas, partnering with a bunch of other electeds, uh, from two to three thirty. Um, that's, that's all that I have for you guys.
Great. Thank you very much. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no other elected representatives, we're going to move into the business session of the board where, as I mentioned, only board members are allowed to speak. Board members attending virtually, please remember to have your videos on during the board meeting. So we are entering business session, starting with a vote to accept the October minutes. May I have a motion? And a second? Thank you. As a reminder to all members, we are conducting voting using the Google Forms sent to you by Milan. Please use this Google, use these to cast your vote if you are in person and do not have a device capable of casting this vote. Or if you're having issues or need assistance, the board office is available to help. For members attending virtually, please let us know in the Zoom chat if you're having any issues. So now we will have our November elections. Unlike the elections we had in June, these officers will be serving a full term until next November. Kevin Frizz, the esteemed Chair of the Elections Committee, will call the candidates to the podium one at a time. Each candidate is give, will be given up to three minutes to address the board. Candidates running unopposed are gently encouraged to keep their comments brief or yield back their time as I intend to. You receive two ballots from Milan and you'll be using the second one to vote in the election. You may vote after hearing from all the candidates for a given position or at the end of the statements. Like the resolutions, you will only be hitting submit once. After all, the candidates have had an opportunity to address the board. We will then tally the votes and announce the elected officers of our board for the coming year. So I'll turn it over to you, Kevin.
Hi, I'm Kevin. I'm Chair. Hi, I'm Kevin Frizz. I'm Chair of the Election Committee. Thanks to Zul and Yodan, who are also on the Election Committee for this cycle. As you might remember, we just did this back in May, June. So this is sort of an abbreviated session. So most of what Brad said actually is not even necessarily relevant. We only have one contested election at the moment between Samir Lavangia and Catherine Ellington. They are both running for Second Vice Chair. However, with the purpose of saving everyone a little bit of time, both of them have foregone their right to give a speech. So we will have no speeches tonight from any of the candidates. We have, however, sent around prepared statements from all of the candidates 10 days ago, 10 business days ago, two weeks ago in my email to all of you. So hopefully that provides you a little bit of background on who you're voting for and what's important to them. And that I believe is it. You can go to Milan's email. There's a separate section where you can click on a link to vote for the candidates. All of them, except for the Second Vice Chair position, you either vote for the candidate or abstain if you so choose. Are we do, Brad, are we doing that now? And we're doing, we're doing that now. Do we, are we going to like, give a few minutes and?
Yeah, I mean, we'll give everyone a few minutes. I think we talked about this at Executive Committee, but I don't want to assume that any of the people running unopposed don't want to speak. So I don't. I will say.
Now I yield my time.
Great. Catherine and Samir, I believe you did. You're good?
Yeah.
Kim, would you like to?
All right. And is Anker here? So, all right, everyone sealed their time. You're voting now. So we'll check back in at 6:45. Correct.
Correct. Now, and there's one section for voting on our regular resolutions and then another section just down for voting on candidates.
Will you announce the names of the women now?
We will announce it after, like in.
Kevin will announce when the voting's done.
No other, if abstain wins, we have a problem.
And technically my term ends at the end of November. So you're stuck with me at least through this meeting.
When in the middle of everything in this room.
Remember, yeah.
We all remember.
If anyone is having any issues or hasn't cast their vote, please make some noise. All right, Kevin, take it away.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and announce the winners. The Chair, congratulations to Bradley Sherburne, reelected. Yuran, Yuran Nody Victor, also reelected. For Second Vice Chair, Samir Lavangia is the winner tonight. Do I announce the numbers? 27 in favor and Catherine had 10 in favor. Milan, Kim and Anker also won their positions as well. We did noteworthy have three abstentions in the Second Vice Chair voting to me. The only one you need to worry about, Mike, is the Second Vice Chair. And Samir Lavangia has won Second Vice Chair. Everyone else maintained their position. Same time next November.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, we will now move into the District Managers Report. You're up, Marissa. Between bouncing the door.
Well, congratulations to all the officers and to everybody who ran. It takes, um, thank you for, for doing that and wanting to step up. We have welcomed two new Fund for the City of New York Fellows this school year. Ben Verde and Druvin Thakar will be working closely together and with the Parks and Land Use Committees on an open space project for the district. Ben will be focusing specifically on POPs throughout the district. Those are privately owned public spaces. And Druvin will be focused on identifying possible open space within the MSMX corridors. You may see them at various meetings, listening in and learning about the board. And there will be a final presentation of their work at the end of the school year for all the members. I also wanted to mention that we have many CUNY and SUNY schools or programs in our district. And many of you may not be aware that in our supposed greatest city in the world, 40% of CUNY students are food insecure. That's over 110,000 students and that's just CUNY. So to help address this problem, CUNYS and SUNYS have food pantries in most of their buildings, most run robust food pantry programs. And SL Green, the real estate developer, reached out to us for ideas to partner with their Food First Initiative. We've connected them to Gutman College and they will be holding an event to support that food pantry for those students. I want to thank SL Green for reaching out and commend them on their Food First program. And I hope this is beginning of a long collaboration with CUNYS. And lastly, I just want to mention that we are very fortunate in Community Board Five to have strong working relationships with all our elected officials and their staff at both the city and state level. This is not the case for many community boards around the city. But we have two partners that work and listen to us. And if there are disagreements, they are respected and respectful. And very lucky for us, most will continue on in their capacities for now. But one has been terminated out of the council, Keith Powers, and I want to just take a moment to recognize the council member and his staff for their steadfast support and collaboration with the board. Through annual discretionary funding, regular check-ins with staff as a provider of resources and a willingness to throw weight around when needed, Keith Powers has been a truly great partner. I want to give a big shout out to Franklin Richards. He's been the Community Board Five liaison for Councilmember Powers for years. And Franklin, I really want to thank you for the time and responsiveness whenever we've reached out. It's really been a genuine pleasure working with you. I know you have another month, but December can get crazy. And so Franklin, we, we wish you in the office, we wish you the very, very best. And Councilmember Powers, the best of luck. I'm sure we haven't seen the last of you. And we look forward to working with the incoming council member, Virginia Maloney, and her office staff and hope they follow Councilmember Powers' lead in their partnership with CB5.
Thank you so much, Marissa.
All right. Uh, thank you, Marissa. We will now move into the Chair's Report. So first I want to echo Marissa and thank all of our candidates in this year's elections and congratulations to all those who are elected. It is a real pleasure to continue to serve with so many familiar faces, even if this election wasn't exactly a nail biter. Sure, Mike. I'm grateful to the continued confidence you've placed in me and I'm looking forward to another productive term. Next, I want to extend a sincere thank you to the Budget Task Force, Melissa, Todd, Kieran, Catherine, Mike Greeley and Andrea, and most importantly, the Chair of that Task Force, Kim McCall. I want to thank them on behalf of the board for their hard work on our budget requests and district needs statement. These are two of the most important documents we produce each year and both are required by the city charter. Their tireless work makes that possible. So thank you to all of you. Marissa scooped me on the Community Planning Fellows, so I'll skip that a little bit and then move on to the on the table behind you at the, at the front of the room, you will find the Quarterly Treasures Report repaired, prepared by Anker. Please take a copy. It provides an overview of our current financial position and is part of our ongoing commitment to transparency and good governance. And then finally, I want to clarify something for everyone, but new members, especially on our voting procedure, as it can be a little bit confusing or unclear. Members should only abstain when they are genuinely and entirely uncertain about a resolution. Abstaining is not a neutral or polite no comment, and it often has the same effect as a no vote. We are appointed to this board to take positions and share our informed opinions, even when it's difficult. I encourage you all to make an effort to take a position on all items that we consider. On the other hand, if you are not present for the presentation or discussion of an item, you should mark yourself absent from the vote. This helps ensure our record accurately reflects participation and deliberation. So with that, I will conclude the Chair's Report. And we will move on to Committee Ports and Resolutions, starting with Kim McCall on behalf of the Executive Committee.
What a time. Hello, friends.
Hello.
Okay, I hope everyone had a chance to read this thoroughly before we got here this evening. Chair, may I have this steamed red?
So deemed.
Fantastic. So I wanted to set the context and give you a high level overview of the work we've been doing over the last few months. So Midtown, as we all know, it's the heartbeat of New York City. I know Michael agrees with that. It's where the world meets us every single day. Broadway lights up, millions commute through and people from all walks of life cross paths here. But we also see some of the city's biggest challenges up close in our district. Homelessness, unaffordable housing, aging infrastructure and public spaces stretched thin. This year's district needs statement tells one story loud and clear. Midtown is both the city's engine and its stress test. If we can make it work here, we can make it work anywhere. So I want to talk a little about the community engagement process and how we went through discovery to put this together. Thank you for recognizing the Task Force already. Again, our amazing members, Andrea, Catherine, Kieran, Melissa, Michael Greeley and Todd. I am eternally grateful for your support over the last few months. So I want to share, we didn't write this in isolation. We reviewed every agency response from our last set of budget requests in 2026. We joined city budget consultations. We reached out to every bid and neighborhood association. We spoke with nonprofits, schools and service providers, and we promoted a district wide survey that 100 residents and workers and board members took time to complete. And furthermore, every committee participated and weighed in as well. And I know that you were all part of that process. Thank you. The message was remarkably consistent. Homelessness, housing and quality of life. Those are the issues defining our district and our future. So how we ranked our top three pressing needs, we have behavioral health and homelessness. Homelessness is both a humanitarian and a fiscal crisis. We're calling for more Behavioral Health Emergency Assistance Response Division teams. Quite a mouthful. It's usually called be heard, but wanted to explain what that meant. More supportive housing and better mental health outreach paired with prevention like eviction protection and housing stabilization. We also can't have a thriving Midtown if no one can afford to live here, right? MSMX is a real opportunity, but only if affordability is deep, tenant protections are strong and conversions move quickly. On quality of life, we all know that clean, safe streets are what make people want to live and work here. We're pushing for more sanitation, containerization, better lighting and coordinated late night operations because quality of life is economic vitality. So under our Health and Human Services pillar, as we all know, Midtown does not have a hospital. Yet tens of thousands rely on our local health network every day. So as mentioned, we need more behavioral health crisis teams, more migrant family case management and more senior services. Food insecurity, as Marissa was just discussing, air quality and public health cannot be afterthoughts. They're the foundation of a really livable city. Housing is also, I believe, a defining issue of our time. So when we think about our housing, economic development and land use priorities, we know that rents are up 40%, that supply hasn't kept pace and that the workforce that powers Midtown can't even afford to live here. We're backing the MSMX, but with strong affordability mandates and real tenant protections. And on the economic side, we're asking for small business services and economic development corporation support for small businesses, minority and women owned business enterprises and cultural nonprofits. Plus, we're seeking expanded Workforce One Career Centers and DYCD, which is Department of Youth and Community Development Programs to help connect more people to opportunities in our district. When we think about core infrastructure, city services and resilience, what we know is that Midtown runs on an infrastructure that was built a century ago. So we're asking for DEP, which is our Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of Design and Construction to accelerate some of their work around 42nd Street, the reconstruction and then redesign, which is what we're seeking. Investing in stormwater and green infrastructure and modernizing some of the sanitation fleets. Overflowing trash, noise and flooding aren't just annoyances, they're signs of systems that are overdue for reinvestment. Now, I know that we all care about transportation and this was a big one. It's where it all meets, where density, tourism and accessibility all collide. So we're calling for. So we're calling for permanent Broadway vision plazas, better lighting, sidewalk extensions, ADA upgrades and safer micro mobility enforcement. When the streets work for everyone, the city works better. Now, when we think about public safety, public safety is about trust. People need to feel safe walking home or running their businesses, and those are things that are really important to us. Crime is down, but disorder is not. So we're supporting expanding neighborhood coordination teams, embedding mental health responders and targeting retail theft and illegal shops through smarter, more coordinated strategies as detailed in our budget requests. Safety isn't about more rest. It's about balance and consistency with some of these programs. And then when we think about youth education and workforce, Midtown's youth ecosystem is small, but it's mighty and it's under pressure. We're calling for classroom expansion, more after school and summer programs and childcare that working families can actually afford. We need more school counselors and runaway and homeless youth beds. And we want to baseline amazing programs like Learn to Work, Summer Youth Employment Program, which is my favorite, I'm obsessed, and Advance and Earn. Every dollar invested youth pays back tenfold in safety, stability and civic pride. And then finally, of course, our parks and open spaces and culture. The parks of our district are are Midtown's lungs and living room, and they're overused and underfunded. We need more Parks Enforcement Patrol officers. We all know we need capital repairs at both Union and Madison Madison Square Parks, more accessible restrooms and tree canopy expansion. I will mention this is important to us, but it's an operational issue, not a budget issue. We're also pushing for public art, library upgrades and Sunday hours. These aren't amenities. These are what make New York feel human. So across every silo, I think the message is the same, housing, livability and care. We're asking the city to fund what works, affordable housing, mental health response, clean streets and strong public spaces. Because the health of Midtown is the health of New York City. So that's that. Now I'm like feeling very strongly about this.
Port of force. All right.
Okay.
Are there any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? You're on.
I just want to say, I think the committee, um, the task force did a great job. Thank you, Kim. Thank you for that uh presentation. You know, this was, we had, we followed a new process this year. And uh, I think it went swimmingly. I think the result has been fantastic. I'm going to be debriefing with Kim and others to see if there's even more improvements that we can make. But as Kim said, this is something that the city charter requires of us. In many ways, this is the most important thing that we do. And um, I think the task force did a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Todd. Do we have a microphone? Uh, Christopher in front of you?
Yes, I just.
I don't think online. There you go.
So I just want to thank Kim and I second everything that Yaron and Bradley said about the importance of this committee. But I have this to add, as a small businessman and somebody who's lived in the district and worked in the district for 35 years, the amount, the the degree of uh, the quality of life issues and the crime issues are off the charts. And many people in my circle, which is that of the small businessmen, have thrown up their hands and come to the conclusion that the city has stopped caring or stopped addressing these issues. And all I can say is having worked on the task force with our colleagues, it's truly the case that 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 is not, it it's not true. By participating in this project and by uh, supporting our resolutions and getting the word out about all these different, many different approaches to addressing these issues, we're showing that democracy in our city and collaboration in a constructive way is alive and kicking. So I would just say that all of us have to, we we function as ambassadors to a certain extent. When we mix with our neighbors and people in this district and they throw up their hands and they feel like it's hopeful, it's not true. And we have to let them know that we're doing and making these efforts. And thank you to everybody on the committee for, you know, putting in the time and hours to perform this vital service.
Thank you, Todd. Any other comments? Yeah, Kevin. Todd, you pass the mic. Yeah.
Yeah, there.
Thank you. Um, first, Kim, I just want to say that was just such an inspiring commentary and introduction to um, to this vote. I I was really moved by it. I I thought it was great. And I I feel like, you know, I don't know what the pro- practice is here, but that, if it's on video, it should be on our website. It really should. I mean, it was, it is such a a positive message about the priorities that we're putting forward. So um, that's, that's how I feel about it. I don't know how others feel, but I think it should be shared.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other comments? Catherine. Grab the microphone, please.
Well, I just wanted to add that every good.
Yeah, you're good. You're good.
Is every good narrative has a set of numbers to go with it. So please take a look and review the numbers. The financials are supposed to tell the story as well. So please take a look at those line items. A lot of hard work went into developing all of this. It's a whole pack.
Great. Thank you, Catherine.
Both the expense and.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much, Kim. All right, we will move to transportation. David, you're up. Good luck following that.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm David Sigmund, Chair of the Transportation Committee. And we have two uh, resolutions up tonight. Thank you to Kelly and Will for drafting these. So the first one, uh, it's kind of a new one for us. I've been on the Transportation Committee for four years and have never seen one of these before. And it turns out that the rules changed for newsstand applications uh, in 2019 and 2021. So uh, you used to have a personal license for a newsstand and there was no selling of that license. If you didn't want to run it anymore, that was the end of it and somebody else would come in. And so we were constantly seeing new applications for newsstands. Well, now they can be held in a corporate entity, sold to other other owners. And so we haven't really seen one until today. I was assuming that this would be like um, a liquor license where we would engage with the applicant, we would see an application. So none of that happens. Uh, this is all done through uh, DCWP, Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. The applicant did not appear in front of us. We saw the document that he had filed with DCWP, but we didn't have any other information. Questions were raised at our uh, meeting about, you know, what kinds of things are they going to be selling? We don't know. And on top of that, from a process standpoint, the other issue was that there's already, as you can see in this uh, picture, there's a, an existing newsstand at 54th and Sixth, and the proposed one was at 53rd and Sixth. There's also a newsstand inside the Hilton Hotel. There are other street newsstands within a couple of blocks. There are other freestanding stores and midblocks in the area. So uh, after considering all of that, the committee voted 11 to two uh, to uh, deny the application. And so that is sent to DCWP, who then takes it up with um, with the applicant. And uh, I think the two nays on this were mostly concerned about the fact that we had heard from people that were against the application, but not from people that were in favor of the application because the applicant never appeared. The second one.
No, so we're gonna do. What? We're gonna do. Oh, sorry. Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Todd. Grab the microphone.
Thanks. So I'm glad to hear that uh, you're, it sounds like you're more or less approving the policy that we've long had, which is we're not approving any new ones. I I think it might be helpful, since we have so many new people on the board, to give some background and context on why it is that we don't really approve new ones. Uh, I'll wait till comments to make some, some uh, some additional comments about what happened.
Comments, Todd. We're in comments.
Oh, we're in comments. So uh, basically, I've sat through a number of these newsstand renewals uh, and and applications and we, and the board over the last several years, as long as I've been around, has almost uniformly uh, denied. And it's gotten worse and worse and worse in the sense that people, when they did show up, were automatically denied our, our blessing. And really, the reason, the reason is, is that they took up spaces on the sidewalks where they really didn't perform any function, especially where people don't really buy newspapers and magazines anymore and they function only as billboards. And this re, and the idea that they're just going to stay there forever and be handed down. You heard, you heard David mention the fact that they're now corporatized and they can just be bought and sold. That's just outrageous. Right? So I hope that in passing this resolution, and those of you who are new on the board, you understand what's going on. And it's a lot of the people in my recollection that came before uh, the relevant committee, were actually hardworking people that couldn't understand why we were turning them down, and that's really the reason. Okay, but uh, I support this and thank you for the committee for, you know, continuing your work in this regard.
Thank you, Todd. You're on.
I'm going to support the committee on this. I just want to say though, that I, I do see value to newsstands. I do see value to newsstands. And I think they are actually an important part of tourist infrastructure. I think if, you know, you go to, maybe I'll travel to different cities. You know, you want to, you want a bottle of water when you're walking around and things like that, and our newsstands provide that. I just, I sort of disagree with the previous characterization that they're just billboards. I will still support the committee on this, but I do think it's a New York thing that provides value to the city, but we need to be careful about sort of how dense they are, et cetera.
Thank you, Ron. Next, BJ.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I agree with um, the previous speaker. I mean, you know, it's interesting that the stand is that some, just because some corporation or it's been corporatized. Guess what? There are many, many companies and many uh, stores and retail shops that are corporatized that are being bought out by venture capitalists and many other firms. So I think the whole idea, even the argument that there is another newsstand on the corner of sixty, uh, on 54th to 53rd, there should be more newsstands, right? Pre-pandemic, there are many newsstands and even if they didn't sell the newspaper, it was like, you know, yes, absolutely. They were able to sell water for $2 versus going to restaurant or some high-end deli that sells it for $5. So I think the new, you know, I I don't agree that it's because it's corporatized. We don't know who the corporation is. It could be that. And and it's sort of like the taxi medallions, right? Before you had to sell your medallions or rent them out. So I do think this needs another look. You know, we we're supposed to help our businesses and small businesses, and this doesn't sound like we're helping the small business. It's like saying just because they're corporatized, we're blindly saying no to them. So on that note, I will vote no for this resolution or yes, I guess, whichever the one opposite path. So thank you.
Thank you, BJ. And if you support the newsstand, you should vote no on the resolution. Christopher.
So uh, just in this discussion about like corporate interest and things like that, the the opposition that we heard to the newsstand was from the Hilton Hotel that was annoyed about the competition with their gift shop. And they were also somehow upset about the Blue Mercury, which I don't really know what it is, but it's like a giant cosmetics company or something. So like, uh, we're definitely not by like denying this newsstand, you're not acting like against corporate interest. You're acting in favor of a set of annoy, like other corporate interests, like a very large hotel chain and a large cosmetics company that don't want competition on a sidewalk that is rather large. I I was there the other day, I, you know, walking through the neighborhood. Um, and I was like, there's plenty of space here. And uh, you know, I don't see why like we can help just create a business out of thin air. Like, you know, it's like, there's just space there right now and there's revenue to be made and and we don't know who the applicant is. That's that's fair. But you know, the the space for competition and ease of access to certain things like water and candy and stuff like that, whatever else gets sold at these newsstands, I mean, it it seems like this, it it would be much better for for small businesses to have more of these uh, spaces available. And again, the opposition was strictly a hotel and a large cosmetics chain.
Thank you, Christopher. John.
The, I think with, in in general with this discussion, I think I'm, I'm pro newsstands. Um, I think on this specific instance, having biked along that bike lane going to work for two years, that particular corner is really chaotic in the mornings due to like traffic that gets backed up across Sixth Avenue. So like cars aren't even making it, pedestrians coming to the hotel are like always kind of like unsure as to what's going to happen. Uh, and there's also a couple planners to Mike Kayback's point earlier about kind of like sidewalk distance. So I think, uh, and there's the whole all guys cart across the street on both corners. And so there's already a bunch of stuff around the area. So I think in this case, I'm in favor, or I'm approving the resolution as suggested. But I think general, like we should, you know, be considered or be a lot more open to, I think, newsstands and supporting these kinds of things when, you know, when the space makes sense.
Thank you, John. Karen.
Hey, yeah, just to echo that, I think in the end, we went back and forth and at least for me personally, landed on a, landed on a pedestrian safety. You see the taxis queuing up there, uh, especially in the holiday season or even not in the holiday season, there's a tremendous amount of foot traffic there. So it's another barrier from which behind a pedestrian may come out into the bike lane and so forth. So at least for me, that's why we, I supported this resolution. It was pretty much due to a pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Karen. Before I move to Christopher, does anyone else want to speak? Okay, go ahead, Christopher.
On the interest of pedestrian safety and bike safety, which is my top priority, I don't believe there should be any cars at all in the the borough. But um, and I'll say that till the end, till I die, I should end all my speeches with it. But um, this is not, I'm right here. Oh, slower. Okay. It's always something, Mike. Anything else you need? I think that this is not the way to handle pedestrian safety because it's like to say that to say that like, you know, if there's an issue with the bike lanes or the the car traffic, we should move the cars or expand the bike lane. You know, it's, it's not about like, don't uh, don't add, you know, amenities that that would be beneficial to pedestrians. Just get rid of the cars, move the bike lane over. This is not the way to deal with pedestrian safety. We should deal with pedestrian safety as pedestrian safety as as a particular issue and not in this bizarre roundabout way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Onto the next.
The next one is a large infrastructure project, uh, the replacement of the water main and the distribution mains uh, on the side streets of Seventh Avenue from 34th Street to 14th Street. Uh, I added this black box uh, to show what's in CB five because I really, when we were hearing the uh, the presentation, I completely lost track of the fact that only half of this is in our district. The other half is in CB four. But so we're basically 26th Street and North. And um, so we had kind of a spirited discussion on this. It's a big project. It's going to take four years, starting probably the beginning of next year into um, 2029. They're going to be digging up the length of Seventh Avenue and virtually every side street between uh, Sixth and Eighth. And uh, on top of that, they'll also be removing lead uh, water service into roughly 200 uh, homes in that district. So um, a lot of members of the committee, including myself, had had some, some bad experiences with this uh, near where they live. And so we raised a number of specific concerns. There was a person who uh, is designated by DDC, it's a contractor to be a community liaison. She answered all of our questions. She got back to us pretty quickly on our information requests, gave out her office location, telephone number, email, all of which is now available to the public, agreed to keep us informed so that we could keep our constituents informed. And so in the end, we approved this with a number of comments unanimously, 13-0.
Thank you. Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Okay. Thank you, David. Okay, next we will go to SLAP. Seth, you're up.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Hi, everyone. I'm Seth Borden, Chair of the State Licenses and Permits Committee, or SLAP. SLAP has two resolutions tonight. May I have the resos deemed red? Oh, no worries. I assume yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so deemed.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so our first resolution is an application for a method of operation change for Mission Ceviche, which is at 57 East 17th Street. Andrea led the due diligence on the application, and it was her first as a SLAP member, and she did a fantastic job on it. Mission Ceviche first came to us several years ago when we collected community input and reached a compromise with the restaurant that they've been operating under for the last several years. And they came back to us to apply for several changes, including a closed time of 2:00 AM each night and an outdoor cafe, among other changes to the method of operation. So we received a great deal of feedback to our postings and we held a community meeting. And we heard from residents that although it might be true that there were no 311 complaints about the restaurant specifically, there was a general concern regarding the level of late-night noise in the neighborhood and the possibility that the original application might make things worse, you know, as it was written. So through negotiations with the resident and with the applicant, we reached several key compromises, which are reflected in the resolution before you. And I want to call out a couple key ones. The first one is that instead of pushing the closed time back to 2:00 AM, we will instead maintain the midnight closed time Sunday through Wednesday, and we'll make the closed time 1:00 AM Thursday through Saturday. The other key items were that they agreed not to open a sidewalk cafe, which was of special concern to the residents. And they also agreed to limit special events, among other changes. So the committee agreed that these stipulations were reasonable balance between the concerns of the community and the asks of the business. And I'll note that Andrea has also reached an additional agreement with the applicant that she will, I believe, propose during comments, and I, I support this. So we unanimously voted in favor of the resolution, 14-0-0.
Thank you. Any conflicts? Any questions? Mike, grab a microphone. No, grab a microphone, Mike.
Yeah, a quick question on the, on the method of voting. I'm looking at the, at the voting thing that Milan sent out now. And if we, if we want to vote, say on the one before with, with the, with the newsstands, if we want to vote that we, that we don't want the newsstand, we vote yes.
That's correct. The resolution is to deny. So if you're voting yes, you are supporting a denial of the newsstand.
And, and on this one, a yes is?
Is in support of the denial unless.
Thank you.
Any other questions? John.
Are, is, in these cases, is a denial unless a fairly common? This is kind of just more of a general, general question, not necessarily related to this specific instance.
The short answer is yes, but I'll let Seth give a little bit of kind of the thought process and experience that we've had as a board behind that.
Yeah, yeah, I can address that. So essentially, SLAP almost always does that when we do make a no comment. And it's in order to, because we're an advisory body only, it's to sort of weigh in with the SLA in a way that, you know, is, is advisory. And they're, they're able to, assuming that the applicant, you know, abides by all the stipulations, then, then that's effectively a no comment from us. But if, it also allows us where if the applicant does not abide by the stipulations, it's a recommend deny.
And it's kind of honed over years of experience with SLA in terms of, and also direct conversations with them in terms of how they find our applications most helpful in terms of guiding their ultimate decision. Any other questions? Okay, comments? And I'm going to start with you, Andrea.
I would like to propose a amendment after the executive meeting. The residents, they have reached out and asked to add specific language to one of the stipulations. So I would like to propose that. It's line 1181 and 1182. Applicant shall ensure live DJ events shall only be held Thursday through Saturday and shall not exceed eight nights per month and confined to the seller level only. This has been confirmed by the applicant at a meeting, but hasn't, just, we haven't put it in writing.
So just to be clear, the amendment is on line 1182, following eight nights per month. And it's saying, and?
Confined to the seller level only.
Confined to the seller level. So the entire whereas clause would read, whereas applicant shall agree not to pursue a sidewalk cafe permit, and whereas applicant shall ensure live DJ events shall only be held Thursday through Saturday and shall not exceed eight nights per month and confined to the seller.
Yes.
Great. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any questions to the amendment? Any comments to the amendment? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Amendment passes. Okay. Any other comments to, now we are back into the resolution as amended? Any comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Seth. Or do you have one more?
Oh, one more, yeah. So the second one is a public comment to the Office of Cannabis Management for Proposed Permit Regulations. So first, thank you to Catherine for drafting this resolution. Her knowledge about this topic is something I and the committee would not be able to, to do without. So it's very helpful to have, have her draft. So this, this has to do with legislation signed by Governor Kathy Hochul earlier this year, allowing licensed cannabis retailers to receive cannabis showcase event permits, where they can sell their products directly to consumers through farmers markets and other pop-up events. Regulations governing this were released recently, and OCM is taking public comments until November 24th. And so we had Mara Fitzgerald from Community Board Two take time out of her evening to provide us helpful background information on the regulations. And it emerged through our discussion that the committee's main concern with the regulations as written was that they did not include a formal process for community board input for the applications for these, these showcase events. So we discussed and resolved to write a letter to OCM urging that the opportunity for community board input be included in the final regulations. So the resolution, before you pass unanimously, again, 14-0-0.
Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Mike? Microphone? Mike, Mike, grab a microphone.
Walking around the streets and noticing I had a group from, from Long Island, and they couldn't believe these smells that were walking, that they were, these are high school 14-year-old kids walking around and they're smelling, they're looking at each other and laughing, you know? That kind of thing. But the truth be told, if you want to buy marijuana and you don't want to go or a pill or a cookie or whatever, however they sell it, or vape, you, you don't have to go to these stores where they're paying rent, the truth be told. You walk on Seventh Avenue on the corner of the southwest corner, I think 37th Street. I pass by on my tour all the time. There's a guy sitting there with a little table and he's selling little plastic bags. You walk to Washington Square Park, not in our district, forget about it. You got 10 different choices. So the, the big deal to, to, with the, with these regulations is it can't be enforced until these other little competitors, non-taxpaying competitors are addressed, I would think.
Thank you, Mike. Todd?
So I just want to add and give a little bit of big picture context, context, which is that the cannabis regulatory schema, as it's played out over the last two or three years, it has consistently tended to avoid or belittle, in my opinion, the review process that's called for in the legislation and in the regs. So by making this comment and sending this letter, we show that we're not going to take it sitting down. And we're not the only ones who feel that way. Many of the other community boards feel the same. And when Catherine and I were on the task force and we were reviewing this and dealing with a lot of our colleagues, a lot of people in the public, it was a great fear that the community boards would not, their regulatory and review process would tend to be sidelined. So we have to keep strong and keep an eye on this and use whatever influence we have to make sure that our voices are heard on these important matters.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else? Okay. Yes, Kevin, go ahead.
Assuming this would pass, can a copy of this resolution be provided for every elected official?
Yes, all of our resolutions typically go to elected officials. Okay. Robert?
Yeah, just not clear on the resolution, how to vote. So can you repeat what the public comment question of it is?
Do you want to just summarize the resolve for us, please, Seth?
Yeah, so summarize the resolve. Essentially, what we're going to do is write a, a letter to OCM, and this will also be, you know, go out to elected officials, to urge that community board input be included in the formal process for granting permits to allow cannabis retailers to sell at these cannabis showcase events. So voting in favor of that is, is saying that we'll, we'll write a letter to OCM to, to indicate that.
Great, thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Seth. Thank you. Okay. Kevin, you're up for landmarks.
Okay, landmarks had five resolutions applicants this month. Can I have them deemed red?
So deemed.
The first applicant is the New York City Center. That's for those who don't know, it's on West 55th between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. The New York City Center is a performing arts center that opened for performing arts in 1943, landmarked in 1983. This specific application, the city center is replacing its rooftop chilling system. It's an HVAC renovation that will include the installation of a new chiller on the roof, new mechanical louvers within existing window bays. Overall, this is a very simple application. The new chiller is not visible from the sidewalk, and the new louvers are relatively well-hidden within the shadows of existing window bays. Resolution passed committee unanimously, 13-0-0.
Great. Any conflicts?
Yes.
Conflicts? BJ, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a conflict. I will not vote on this, and I will abstain from it because I'm on the board of City Center.
So you should not abstain. You should, there's a category for present, not entitled. Please use that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Kevin?
I live across the street from this place. So I am keenly interested. Did they share any information about the noise mitigation for, you know, the construction work that they're going to do there? So very. Do you have a timeline to anything? There's so much construction going on in 55th Street. I literally, this will drive me insane if there's one more thing. So when will this start?
It's a very good question. I'll be honest and say I do not know. I imagine the Sunday when the giant crane blocks the street to install the new chiller on the roof might be a good weekend to get out of the city. But other than that, it should be relatively painless. Honestly, this presentation lasted all about 15 minutes. Everyone in the committee is a huge fan of the city center itself, so we kind of wished it would pass it longer. But it was so straightforward. I mean, for your purposes, you won't even know it's there. You won't know any difference once it's done, I'd be loud.
Yeah, my, my concern wasn't about necessarily that as much as I'm just concerned whether it'd be over like five days or is it going to be six months, you know, that, that sort of thing.
Unfortunately, that's not typically the purview of the landmarks that happens, sort of as a subsequent.
Good question.
I was just asking if they?
Fair question. Karen, go ahead. Any others?
As Kevin already mentioned, you know, they didn't, they didn't specify kind of an ETA, but it's just an HVAC upgrade, not to minimize it. But it's not, it's not like a grand structural work or whatnot, just to try to put you at ease.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, next.
Comment?
Oh, you have a comment, BJ, yes.
Yeah, no, as a City Center board member, thank you for this. But also, it's a great institution right next to Carnegie Hall. So we have Fall for Dance, which is an amazing program where worldwide, different dance companies come and present for two weeks in the fall time. And all tickets are less than $35. You can't get any tickets like that around New York City. World-class, like Paris Opera Ballet in November, we have the Dutch Ballet coming. And then we also do what's called the encore program right now. Actually, we just wrapped up Bad Boy the Musical, which was an amazing show. And then other encore shows will be coming. So I hope all of you will take the opportunity to come and visit City Center. Thanks.
Thank you, BJ. Any other comments? Okay. Now on to the next one.
Okay. Second presentation is another well-known building, the Metropolitan Museum of Art. Some of you may have heard of it. The Met is obviously not in our district, but it is within Central Park. And any community board that borders Central Park has a vote on changes within the park. So this includes any landmark-related changes to the Met, therefore CB5 has purview appropriate. The building itself is a landmark, but the Great Hall and the Great Stairway, when you first come in, are designated interior landmarks. And the Met is launching a new system of signs within the Great Hall. The signs are very functional. They're designed to guide visitors and provide information about exhibits. And this new signage will replace a previous patchwork of signs and systems that had been designed over the years and will make all signs follow a consolidated color and design palette. As usual, the Met team gave a thorough and very professional presentation. If any of you are listening, very well done. The resolution passed 12 in favor, none opposed, one present, not entitled.
Great, thank you. Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Okay, on to the next one.
Great. The third building is 10 Rockefeller Center, Rockefeller Plaza. This building is obviously part of the Rockefeller complex, 16-story building on the 48th Street side. If you visit the Today Show, it's the building that holds the Today Show as well, as well as Christie's Auction House. Interestingly, 10 floors of this 16-floor building are going to become a new luxury hotel. If you are familiar with Aspen and know the Little Nell, they are opening a branch in New York, and it's going in 10 Rockefeller Plaza. The application before the landmarks committee was to remodel the entrance, which is going to be the entrance to this new luxury hotel. These changes are going to include specifically a lightbox featuring fabric glass, a marquee with black metal finish, enfrusted glass, and sconces on either side. That is just a brief summary, but it looks terrific. The application passed landmarks unanimously, 13-0-0.
Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Okay, next.
The fourth application is 620 Avenue of the Americas. This is the Siegel Cooper Building. It's better well-known to most of you, I'm sure, because as the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, TJ Maxx Marshall's giant superstore. Given that Bed Bath is no longer with us, Burlington is now moving into Bed Bath space, and their proposal was to modify the signage that Burlington wants to put on the exterior. and their proposal was to modify the signage that Burlington wants to put on the exterior of the store. If you've been around this building, you obviously know it is a giant billboard already. So there's extensive discussion about the appropriateness of the signage that Burlington wanted to put up. Most of the signage plan was contextually appropriate and fit the historic pattern of the building, what it's become. However, their plan included illuminated light box signs and LED screens that were on the inside of the windows but faced out onto the sidewalk. The committee felt that this new lighting plan introduced a new level of visual prominence, essentially taking it to the next level that's incompatible with the Ladies Mile Landmark District. The Landmark Committee recommended denial unless all illuminated signs were moved from the proposal. It's important to note here that in between the committee meeting and tonight, the Burlington team did contact us, contacted the community board office, and said that they have revised their proposal to remove the light boxes from the Nineteenth Street side of the building. There will still be some light box and some LED signage on the Sixth Avenue side and on the corner, but all the signs that were going to go down Nineteenth Street, they've agreed to eliminate. However, the resolution did call for the elimination of all lighted signage. So we have left the resolution as it stands. The resolution passed eleven in favor, two against. The two that were against felt that, given the history of the building as a large retail operator and the amount of signage that's already there, it did not seem contextually inappropriate to have the signage.
Okay. Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Robert?
So I was one of the, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So I was one of the two no votes on this resolution, and I do want to explain my thought process there. So we received a detailed presentation by the applicant, and the presentation included photographs of the building going back a number of decades. The illuminated light boxes are going to be, you know, in the same place as, you know, window displays that have existed there for many, many years. The technology obviously has changed, but it's the same basic idea. So in terms of it being contextually appropriate, I don't see how, you know, this modern method of advertisement is not contextually appropriate for, you know, the 21st century. The issue that I had really relates to process, which is to say that I have concerns about the committee imposing these sort of discretionary requirements on businesses that are operating within landmark buildings that are additional to, you know, whatever is otherwise required by law. So in this case, there are, as I understand it, limitations on the use of these light boxes and LED displays. And there was no question about the applicant complying with those requirements. So what is effectively happening here is that these businesses operating in these landmarks are, they're at a competitive disadvantage. It can be a real infringement on the business. And perhaps most importantly of all, it's just the discretionary nature of the process is a real issue. We, an applicant, come to the meeting, wasn't the same applicant, who made a comment about how they were afraid to come before our committee. And I found that to be quite distressing to hear. So anyway, that hopefully explains why I voted against, and that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Last one.
The last one is One Union Square West. This is the building on the southwest corner of Union Square. This is a little bit unique in that the owner of the building was applying for a retail signage master plan. We had never seen one of these, at least in my time in Landmarks Committee. Sorry. The the plan standardizes placement, materials, scale, and illumination. This framework simplifies future applications and protects the building's architecture's coherence. And the committee finds the plan sensitive to historic detailing and appropriately restrained tenant needs. The committee voted unanimously, thirteen in favor, none opposed.
Okay, any conflicts? Any questions? You're on.
Can you just give us a little more on what a master plan here is? So is it? It's like, well, go ahead.
Yeah. So as a master plan, the building owner is effectively applying to have a theme applied to this building into perpetuity. So they're not, it's not like the Burlington case where they're applying, like, we want to put these ten signs up, and this is what they're going to look like. The owner is saying, these are the types of signs that we're applying to put into our windows, et cetera. And then this kind of thematic design approval, the signage master plan, lives out into perpetuity for whatever tenant kind of goes into the space. The idea is, the owner actually came to the meeting and gave a very heartfelt speech a little bit. They basically said that we're trying to make it a little bit easier application for a tenant to come into the space by making it, by telling them they don't need to go through this whole process of coming to community board landmarks, they don't need to go to LPC and pitch their whole thing because it's already been all pre-approved. Like, just come in with your signage, meet this criteria, and you're good to go. We're basically approving the criteria.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
The only thing I would add is that Landmarks Preservation Commission, as it does, meets every week on Tuesday. Next Tuesday, you can watch their meetings online. They're going to review the Met, the City Center, and the 620, the Burlington Building, if anyone is curious.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, next up, we have land use, housing, and zoning, Nancy.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Gosho. I'm Chair of Land Use, Housing, and Zoning Committee of Manhattan Community Board Five. First of all, I'd like to thank David for drafting the one resolution that we have. You can find it on pages thirty-three to thirty-five. I'm sure you've all read it. But I would like to ask if you could, we could deem that as read.
So deemed.
Thank you. This reso will be submitted to the Department of City Planning, also known as DCP. So this is about what's been happening with hotel development in Manhattan, specifically Community Board District Five, where there's been an increasingly constrained development of special permits for hotels, particularly in three areas, East Midtown in 2017, M1 districts in 2018, and citywide in 2021. Each new hotel now requires case-by-case review to ensure neighborhood compatibility and avoid land use conflicts. In M1 areas, tall hotels have disrupted lower-scale industrial and residential neighborhoods, adding traffic noise and nightlife disturbances. Now, the reason we are bringing this up now is we feel that we should take a different approach for our new four areas called MSMX. Everyone remembers what MSMX is? These are four areas in Midtown where we are adding housing, which was before not permitted. Hotels were permitted as of right, but then the citywide hotel permit came into play. And so because of that, we've had maybe two hotels in the past several years that have been actually come before us and have been built. So we believe that we should consider the hotel special permit. Some modifications, we're asking this of the DCP, because the MSMX zone is dense, transit-rich district that is well-suited for hotels. Post-COVID trends showed limited new supply, rising occupancy eighty-five to eighty-nine percent by 2029, and rates of $350 to $400 per night per room, with short-term rental limits and Safe Hotels Act further tightening the market. Many underbuilt MSMX sites could accommodate hotels, but the current permit requirement deters such investment. CB5 has consistently opposed overly broad hotel restrictions in 2025, committed to studying the MSMX impacts of the hotel special permit. So we do support a balanced mix of uses in MSMX, but prioritize, of course, new housing. So we had three resolves under this resolution. The first one is modify the hotel special permit to allow smaller, appropriate MSMX sites to proceed under a more simplified path. Establish a size threshold for smaller projects to undergo City Planning Commission certification, not full U-Lerp. And everyone knows what U-Lerp is, right? Okay. With community board referral. And the third one is to clarify and strengthen the special permit required findings to replace the vague language on conflicts and neighborhood character. This was approved by twelve and opposed by one.
Thank you, Nancy. Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Who's, Mike? We have a microphone that we can give to Mike down at the end of the table?
I was the one vote against it. I, I believe that the the hotel, a lot that where a hotel could be built, also housing could be built. And as we've seen with hotels, they've been converted to condos. So if a building could hold 300 hotel rooms, it could hold 100 or 150 apartments. So I believe the whole point of MSMX is to give more housing. We need affordable housing according to our district needs statement. And I don't, I don't see the need for putting more competition for housing by using them for hotels.
Thank you, Mike. You're on.
Yeah, I just, I want to sort of give my impression of this resolution. I'm on land use and was part of this discussion. Sorry, Mike, what? I wanted to give my impression of this resolution as we talked about it. So as a committee and as a board, we've talked about the potential issues with the hotel special permit. It's something we even heard from DCP in the MSMX process, that they had sort of perceived that there were unintended consequences of the permit as it was and that it might have flaws. This resolution, I think, is smart in that it's not prescriptive. Like, I don't think we think we know the answer to how to fix the permit. I think we are just saying to DCP, here are some things you might want to look at. And being targeted with, here are specifically some areas you might want to look at. You know, I, we talked about this in committee, and I think we all kind of were like, yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what the answer is. I don't know exactly where these lines should be. But we do think that it should be looked at and reviewed, and that it can be improved. And so I think this is a very good resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Renal?
So apologies I missed this meeting. But I did look through the video recording, and I know there was extensive discussion around how, just looking at smaller floor plates, would, including only places with smaller floor plates, would solve, somehow solve the issue of the conflict between affordable housing and and hotels? I was wondering if David could expand on that.
Yeah, we are in comments, but I'll allow the question.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, you know, the concept that was laid out in the resolution is that when you get to some certain size that we didn't specify, the efficiency of an apartment building becomes very low. I mean, the street that I live on, there's an apartment building that's 30 feet wide. It's eight stories tall. You know, I'm amazed that it got built at all. Half of the frontage is a stairway, an emergency exit. So there is a point at which a hotel might work on a smaller floor plate, but an efficient apartment wouldn't. And so that was kind of the basis for saying, you know, that this was a reasonable way to try and sort out, you know, which might fall into this other category. But as Iran said, I mean, we weren't like really prescriptive. At one point, we were saying, you know, is it at 5,000 feet? We didn't do that. We're leaving it to DCP and others to decide what the appropriate measurement is.
Renal, I think the way to think about it is we're asking for some, another look and some refinements. The hotel special permit has been in, in operation for a number of years now, and we're beginning to see issues where we're not getting the number of hotel rooms that we need for tourism. We certainly support affordable housing in these areas, but in some cases, we also need hotel rooms because we are Midtown Manhattan, and it's a tourist destination as well.
Thank you.
I think that's a good point. We're trying to come up with a balance, but I think the permit could be, it could be refined, and I think we're asking for some refinements.
Can I just, one follow-up on that?
Go ahead.
Do we consider, I know it's not somehow become a bad word, but the single-room occupancy could possibly go into the same space that a hotel would go into, right?
Yes.
At the end of the floor.
But there probably would be different requirements for something like that. And since we have MIH, single-room occupancy would be MIH. There would have to be supportive housing and all kinds of special things that would go with that.
Thanks.
Thank you. David, did you want to?
No.
Okay. Todd? Grab a microphone, Todd.
Hello? Everybody? Everybody hear me?
There you go.
So again, I have a dog in this fight. I say that upfront. I run a conference center, and I'm dependent upon a good supply of reasonably priced hotel rooms to run my business efficiently and effectively. So that's, I speak from that perspective, full disclosure. When the special permit system was passed, there was a lot of criticism about it, having to do with the fact that if it went through as designed, that it would lead to an exponential decrease in the number of hotels built in whatever size with the new regulations. And rather than, we're talking now about a measured approach and trying to balance all the issues. But at the time that it was passed, the criticism of it was that it was less a balanced approach, trying to foresee and measure the conflicting interests than it was of special interests trying to get as much as they could in their favor. So I hope that, and the process they were going through and the committee trying to keep an open mind, I hope that when the time comes, and I think it should be revisited, that we can take a position and be a strong voice to make sure that on reconsideration, it's not just a bunch of special interests fighting for the biggest hotels and to get a process in place, but one that's measured with the proper studies and something that will work in the long term.
Thank you. Mike? We are in comments, yes.
Just to have a comment. And my comment is, when I first came to work in the Garment District in 1967, after got out of active duty and graduate school and all of that stuff, 1967, there was one hotel in the Garment District, the Courtyard, which is on, it's mid-block, and it expands from 39th to 40th Street, between Broadway and Sixth Avenue, one hotel. And in the period of, what's, oh, it's a lot of years already, 60 years? Holy mackerel, doesn't seem like that long. In 60 years, there's now like about close to 40 hotels in that area. And it was, they were coming in like a couple a year. So it was pretty scary. But now it seems to have settled down to what it currently is, and it's slowed down, so. So, um, I think it's good. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. All right. Last but not least, Parks Public Spaces, Libby, you're up.
Hi, everyone. I'm Libby Hutton. I'm the Chair of the Parks Public Spaces and Environment Committee. Uh, this month we had one voting item. It was a resolution about the Macy's Holiday Square presented in conjunction with 34th Street Partnership and Urban Space may have the resolution deemed red.
Sardined.
Thank you. Um, so this is an ongoing, currently active holiday market. This is the second year of operation. It is spanning the blocks from 32nd to 36th Streets this year. This doubles the footprint of the market. So it's taking place in that bow tie between Herald Square and Greeley Square and an additional block north. That Greeley Square, um, extension is how it is expanding the footprint this year. There's going to be, uh, it's four blocks, but three blocks total of market with 126 kiosks, 30 food vendors. There will be a new two-tier, 76-passenger carousel that is very new this year in the Greeley Square portion, and a tented bar pavilion is also new and that's going to be in that D O T, uh, closed roadway. It's a major, um, logistical sort of permitting process. And given all of the activity during the winter season in this area, they're doing a very complicated phased permitting and phased build out, um, that we heard a lot about. They've also made a lot of fire safety upgrades. So this year, uh, we got an update on the fireproof kiosks. It's all the woods being replaced with fire resistant or fireproof materials, including an F 04 certified managers for every, everyone will have that. And it's this chem light material that is fire resistant. The tenting material is also fire resistant. Um, it's very impressive. It's all steel and lots of exciting sort of fireproofing, the new electrician, uh, which we're very concerned about. As far as the market itself goes, our primary concern centered around crowding and pedestrian flow, though we support the activation generally, we just wanted to make sure that the flow, especially around the carousel and with the expanded footprint in the market, that that was being monitored. This year, what is also new is that 34th Street Partnership is putting in the technology to monitor, monitor pedestrian flow. Uh, and we really encourage them to share that information with us in the new year. Um, we're very excited that they're putting in this new, uh, technology to see how we can shape the activation so it still works for everyone who uses the district. We had a couple of other concerns. As we all know, restrooms in our district are not really part of the infrastructure. This is a significantly scaled, um, activation. It's going to bring in about 1,000 to 5,000 people per day. Some estimates go as high as 1.8 million visitors to this area throughout the season. So one of our requests was that we strongly urge the applicant to add temporary restrooms. There are only four restrooms currently in Greeley Square and Herald Square combined, I believe. And so we asked for that. We also, um, had info, we wanted information about whether or not there's sustainable generators. That would be a different option to the diesel operated generators. They're using Con Ed power at the Greeley Square location, but we encourage them to look into that in the future. Um, some aren't possible because of fire concerns, um, but we encourage them to pursue that. And we also encourage them to pursue more sustainable requests from their, uh, the vendors within the market. They can't require that this year, but we hope that they would look into it in the future. And Urban Space was very open about agreeing to come back to us in, uh, the new year with a breakout after the second year of this. And the vote was 11, 0, 0.
Thank you. Any conflicts? Any questions? Any comments? Mike? Grab a microphone. Every time.
Um, just wanted to comment that, um, recently I went into Bryant Park to specifically check on fire extinguishers. And they have all of the food places like lined up together.
Mike, please keep your comments remain to the resolution.
So my comment is, they listen to us and they put fire extinguisher in every one of them, even if they're like two feet apart, that one's got one, that one's got one, they just all got them. So we did something good there. Congratulations, nice job, folks.
Thank you, Mike.
I will note that Urban Space is currently also the operator of the Bryant Park, um, holiday market as well. So that was a comparison because it's an update on the overall urban space. So this is uniform throughout the district, including the Union Square Holiday Market, which is also open today.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Um, these holiday markets are a nightmare. I hate them. They should not exist and I think we should have a process whereby we actually hear from residents or actual people who live near, and we don't have anything like that. If we treated these holiday markets the way we treat the businesses like Mission Savicee and, and other alcohol places, then I think we would have a very different, uh, you know, scheme in these things. I, I think they are disastrously overcrowded, they're large, they don't serve the members of the district, they're just an impediment to using public space that should be open for other things. We have miles and miles of stores, department stores, food courts, et cetera. Why do we need fake mini versions of them in the, the public realm? I just don't understand it. It is a horrible thing. Also, urban spaces, or urban space, whatever it is, operates like a monopoly. There are no real, there's no real bidding process. We've never heard anything, but they just turn it over to Urban Space. And also, you know, they, they, they do horrible things like build the, the, uh, the shacks, uh, the, with, uh, non-union labor. Really, these things should not be approved. I cannot personally do it. And I know, although people like to vote with the committee, uh, you know, I just urge you to, to, to not.
Thank you, Christopher. Any other comments? Iran?
I would urge the member who just spoke. Well, no, I would say, okay, I would urge those who feel very strongly about an issue, um, in the way, and express that, that there are avenues to explore that should they want to form a task force, they could explore that, they could find like member, like there are avenues and outlets for that kind of passion. And I encourage people in the board to explore that, um, and to sort of channel that into constructive change. So just putting that out there.
Thank you, Iran. Any other comments? Does anyone else have a comment before Mike makes his second comment? Okay, go ahead, Mike. Grab a microphone now.
No, I use the park a lot. I go into that park all the time. And in the summertime, it's great. I listen to music, I sit on the lawn, there's always something going on every single day. But in the wintertime, it's kind of colder. And I've, and, and because of the fact that it's cold, I don't go as much as I used to, especially since the crowds in the, uh, in the, in, um, uh, Bryant Park are so numerous. And there's so much less space due to the ice skating rink and all of these, uh, and, and all of the little shacks that they sell stuff out of. However, I, I think, my opinion is that it's a good thing that they have the, uh, the, this stuff to do, eh, when you, it's too cold to sit out there and play chess and do all of those stuff that we do in the, in the nice, uh, weather, in the, in the inclement weather and the cold and the freezing, there's still a million people in there. It's great. And they're all running around buying stuff and they're from Oklahoma and New Zealand and whatever, and they're, and they're having a great time. I think that if those, uh, uh, those things weren't there for people to do, the park wouldn't get as much usage as it does.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Libby. All right. That concludes voting for tonight. So please, everyone, take a moment, fill out your ballots.
Okay, hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Mike K. Beck, can you hear me? Okay, Mike, can you hear me now? Okay, better. All right. Um, we're going to go through the votes. So regarding the approval of the October 2025 minutes with 39 yes votes, that is approved. Uh, next, the district needs and budget priorities with 39 yes votes, that is approved. For the application for a new stand on 1335 Sixth Ave, 31 yes votes, seven noes and one abstained, that is approved. Uh, next, we've got the, uh, Department of Design and Construction's 7th Avenue Water Main Replacement, 38 yes votes, one abstain, that is approved. Next, moving on to, um, excuse me, Mission Savicee, 38 yes votes and one abstain, that is approved. Uh, moving along, the public comment to the O C M, 38 yes votes, one abstain, that is approved. Next, we have, um, New York City Center, 37 yes votes, one abstain, one present, not entitled, that is approved. Um, next, we're moving on to the Metropolitan Museum of Art Application, 38 yes votes and one abstain, that is approved. Next, 10 Rockefeller Plaza, 38 yes votes and one abstain, that is approved. Next, 620 Avenue of the Americas Application with 33 yes votes, five no votes and one abstain, that is also approved. Next, One Union Square West Signage Master Plan, 38 yes votes, one abstain, that is approved. Our penultimate item, the recommendation for changes to the hotel special permit, 35 yes votes, three no votes, one abstain, that is approved. And our final item for tonight is the Herald Square Holiday Market, 35 yes votes, three no votes and one abstain, and that is approved.
Thank you very much, Milan. Okay. Now I open the floor up for any new business. Todd? Grab a microphone. Right in front of you.
Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Yes. So I just want to call everybody's attention to the front page of the New York Times today. There's a wonderful, interactive article that traces the history, issues and problems relating to, uh, Penn Station that we're, we've been dealing with for years. Those of you who are new to the board and want to educate yourselves, it's, it's a great opportunity. Take a look at that if you have a chance.
It is a great article. Thank you, Todd.
Uh, I just wanted to announce that with his re-ascendence to Second Vice Chair, Samir will be stepping down as Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee. I wanted to thank him for, it's, we've had so many elections, it's hard to keep track of, of a year and a half of, uh, being a, a partner in the operation of the committee and a change agent. And, uh, so I really appreciated his, uh, support in operating the committee and moving it in a new direction. And I would like to announce that, uh, Kieran Patel will be stepping in as Vice Chair of Transportation, uh, phasing in at the next meeting.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Kieran. I'm just going to assume, Mike, you have new business? Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to men, I just wanted to mention that, uh, a couple of days ago, we were invited to S L Green, to One Vanderbilt, where they took us around the, uh, the building. And if you guys haven't been in a magnificent, can you imagine the office, the ceilings of the office place at 24 feet high? The windows are the whole, I mean, to be working in a place like this, forget about it. If you, if you didn't go, you should have gone, but if you can get in there and see this stuff, it's, it'll blow you away if you worked in B buildings like I have all my life, number one. Number two, I'd like to announce two tours that I have coming up, free tours, free, free. It costs nothing. Free tours, one on Wednesday, the 19th, which is, uh, a week from yesterday, the Garment District Tour, where you will, um, you will meet, not only meet the woman responsible for the Garment District being where it is today, but you'll meet her grandson, that would be me. And, uh, also I will have a, on the 7th of December, Sunday, the Flatiron Bid Tour. So those of you who've taken it already will attest how terrific a tour that is, what a great tour guide I am, and it's free. If you're not happy with any of my tours, double your money back. Think about it.
Thank you, Mike. Any other new business? Okay, Eugene, yeah.
It's on?
It's on?
Okay.
As the 5th Avenue Bid Representative, uh, to the CB5, I would like to inform everyone that there will be two events coming up. One is on the 19th of, um, November. It's a snowflake lighting ceremony, um, uh, at 5:00 PM. It will be on 5th Avenue and 58th Street, if everybody wants to join. Uh, it's going to be a celebration, they're lighting all those snowflakes on, uh, 5th Avenue. Another one will be on December 19th, where, is Chris here or he left? Chris left, this, this will be like a day in heaven for him. They're closing down all traffic on 5th Avenue for pedestrians only. And, um, it's, it's, um, the beginning of the Christmas celebrations and, um, all the stores are going to have their window displays and festivities and everything else. And I think that starts from like noon and goes all the way till 11:00 PM. So if anybody's in New York during, during those days, uh, please come down and join and it's going to be a good time.
Thank you very much. Any other new business?
As the representative to the, uh, Times Square Alliance they met this morning, I'll share a written, uh, summary of their entire meeting, just a couple of quick, uh, highlights from the meeting. One, uh, there is going to be, uh, a proposal for, uh, some of the boundary expansion for, uh, the, the Times Square Alliance, um, and, uh, Sixth Avenue and, uh, straightening it out, uh, along Sixth Avenue. So, um, I'll, I'll make sure to include a map of that so people can see it. So I'll, I'll make sure to include a map of that so people can see it. There was a lot of discussion about petty caps. And they, they seem to have a pretty robust agenda around that issue. And I'll be bringing some of that to our Qualifier Life subcommittee or committee, excuse me. And for people who follow it, it's almost that time, you know, the big, the big day in Times Square, New Year's Eve. So the ball is on its way. It will be coming to Times Square. I can't give you the exact date because someone accidentally said it. So I won't do that here because the comms person will go for sure. But they, but it will happen. But I'll send down a lineup of other things for me.
Great, thank you. Any other new business? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Now we have the public session. Are there any speakers in the room or online who would like to speak? As a reminder, at this time, any comment should be about a topic that was not covered during the meeting and that they did not speak to the board about during the public hearing. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized, either in person or virtually. Okay. Seeing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.